Hello and welcome to the Tuesday, April 23rd, meeting of the Air Planning Board. There's an announcement I'm obligated to read. This meeting hearing of the Air Planning Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID number 833-6548-0732, or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Danny Ruiz, Town Planner, at DRuiz@air.mass.us at 978-772-8220, extension 144, prior to the meeting. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Say, Mr. Chair, may I move to approve the agenda?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Ken? How do you... Oh, any discussion, I'm sorry, on the agenda? Ken?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm just... Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's unanimous we can proceed with the agenda. Our first item is One New England Way. Do we have the representative? If you could come up and identify yourselves and say hello, welcome. What I'd like to happen is to give you the floor to do your presentation and talk. Then I'd like to have the opportunity for the board members to ask questions. And then I'd like to open up to any public input, if there is any.
This is a public meeting, not a public hearing.
Correct.
Yep.
Yes.
Let me just share the screen, and then I'll give you the mouse.
Okay.
You want to do introduction?
Sure.
Excuse me, Danny, is a public meeting, is... Are we prohibited from getting public input?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
It's just a public meeting. There's no notification.
There's no notification to be read.
Okay, great, great.
All right. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Victoria Holland. I'm a project manager with Tetra Tech, and I'm also a professional engineer registered in Massachusetts. So today, we're talking about the site development application, which is a minor site plan modification for the expansion and renovation project at the Nussoya Food Factory, which is located at One New England Way, Platte 17, Lot 18. So, this project was in front of the board a couple times throughout late 2022 through mid 2023. The site plan was issued on the 27th of June last year, so almost a year ago. And we are here for a modification. So just a couple things I want to highlight, and I'll try to make this brief. The prior approval was for a 77,000-square-foot building addition. A portion of that building addition was two-story. So the total building footprint was about 192,000 square feet. There were also parking, circulation, loading dock positions, utility improvements, and a new storm water management system associated with this previously approved plan set. So our current application...
I'm going to flip to the new one now.
There you go.
This is the colored versions of the new site plan versus where we're filling in the building.
So actually, wait, can you go back up to the old one?
Yep.
So there are two key portions where the product is reduced. So the owner has decided they don't want to pursue all 77,000 square feet of the building addition. So there's two areas, one in the front...
Right here.
...of the site, right there. And then the second...
Is the tall freezer.
Yes. So instead of 77,000 square feet of additions, it's going to be about 43,000 square feet of additions, for a total of 158,000 square feet. And I do want to note in the cover letter, I don't know that this matters, but the cover letter said 177,000 square feet, and I do want to just note that it's actually 158, and that is a misprint on our side.
Excuse me, is the freezer being retained, or that's being deferred? I'm sorry, I'm confused.
No, I'm glad you asked. So, the freezer, the cold storage building in the back is not correct, is not currently proposed.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
However, however, we still have all the site improvements, utility circulations, new storm water management system. And we left the storm water management system as previously designed to enable the owner, maybe at some point in the future, if they did want to do that expansion in the back, that the system would be able to handle the increase in... It was already designed for that.
Using today's calculations, it's a possibility that he uses in the future.
Yes.
Thank you.
And just noting too, I don't think there will be any future plans for the front expansion, but they kind of want to reserve the right at some point in the future to have a little bit of flexibility with the system. So we did leave it designed for an extra 34,000 square feet of building addition.
And that's the green space?
Yeah.
So the green space around the front door will not be built at this point, but...
You know, all the green space that's shown here, I'll just show you. I'm going to flip between the two.
So the building won't be extended over here?
Yeah.
Correct.
Since the building won't be extended, extended, and we're not going to fill it with parking either.
Yep.
So there's a couple subtleties of this plan. It's almost the exact same plan, but there's a little less parking, and we're not going to relocate the curb cut. As opposed to relocating the curb cut, it's currently about 60 feet wide. We're going to shrink it to make it work, but this was the approved plan where we came straight into the drive aisle. The curb cut's currently down here...
Yep.
...and over here. But on the... I'm sorry, I'm flipping these too fast. I think with the mouse.
And that was really done, there was... We had to merge the prior plan with the current plan, knowing that there wasn't the front building addition. So that was really a...
The curb cut's kind of wide open in here now, so we're closing up this side, and we'll be able to come straight into the property and hit a roundabout for, you know, small traffic here one way, have a nice green space, and maintain all the green space around.
The question I was asking is, that green space there will not be... It's going to be built, but it's not building. It's landscaping.
Yeah, it's going to be landscaping.
It's going to remain.
So there'll be more landscaping, a little bit less parking.
It's, yeah, it's a...
And if I remember, that white building is a two-story building, the white portion, that's the existing two-story building.
Yep.
Correct.
Thank you.
So also, you know, within the building, they're making a bunch of renovations to mezzanines, probably adding some mezzanines in the second floor for the business to increase the output. So the other...
They don't affect the footprint of the building, the interior?
No, no. And then on the exterior, the one big change, so the planning board may remember, prior to coming to the planning board, we went for height variance. We're still using a portion of the height variance, except we're only going to be at 58 feet tall instead of 75. This portion here was going to be 75 feet tall. The portion over here, which I think some of it's cold storage, some of it's access to the loading, is, I think, 58 feet tall. The remaining of the infill is plus or minus 30 feet existing building height. So this will still be a little bit taller, not... Won't be quite maximizing the zoning variance for 75 feet, but I believe it's 58 feet. Otherwise, the site plan is as agreed on before, where we will agree to tighten up this curb cut down here, separate kind of the lane to get to the back, and also to get to the municipal sewer pump station over here. All the redevelopment areas will be improved to new standards for storm water management, since part of the permitting process was storm water management permit. And in order to preserve the rights for future building expansions, we just convinced them, let's just put all the drainage in that we said we were going to. And then if this gets converted to a freezer, at least we have the drainage to connect it to without ripping up the parking lots. Another big improvement that you guys might remember, we're adding some good circulation with a curb cut up in the back. So all of the... We took a look at the permits. The early... The only thing that changes is the plan of record. The waiver that we got for parking is very similar, that they don't need the parking. They have more... There's actually more parking there now than on the proposed plan, but it's still greater than the merger of two shifts, which was one of the things that we made, you know, is also documented.
So if I may remember, a big part of our discussion the last time around was the quality of the screening in this rectangle up here because of the height here. And I was wondering if you've changed any of the plants or the screening, given that now it's only this one at 58 now.
We did. And what we agreed to do, that's in the permit, is we agreed for a... Rather than show all the plantings, they agreed to us, money that will be spent, we'll have the arborists come in, we'll get rid of a bunch of dead trees, prune it out, and we'll make some nice plantings the best we can.
Part of the conditions of the permit.
We're not asking to change any of those things. So I think that really the purpose of us coming here is to make sure when they get all the pricing done and they come for a building permit, that they're going to be presenting a different plan.
Yep.
So we want to update the plan of record the best we can. Questions? It sounded like that was the end. That was the presentation, right?
I don't mean to suggest any other...
So through the chair, Danny, and you folks. So you've got a variance from the zoning board of appeals to the height.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have to amend that request or extend it? Are you just going to let it expire?
Well, we'll still be using it. We won't be using it to the extent that we obtained it. We obtained it for 75 feet.
72 or 75, yeah.
Yeah. And I think the zoning height is 40.
Yeah, so the variance will still stay in place because they're still using it. It's just not... They're not going as high as they requested. They're still going to be over the allowed height, so they don't need to amend it.
We just had an incident where... When did you say your approval was given for the height variance?
Um, it's about a year...
I noticed...
They have to extend it.
Year and a half ago.
Actually.
I don't know. I don't think variance has expired.
They expire in a year.
They do.
One year.
Okay. So we might have to go re-permit that. We didn't... We haven't got that far.
I'll have to talk... I'll talk with Sam about that and see if... What the...
Double check on the variance.
On the variance.
Thank you. So, yeah, I think the height is 40. We're proposing 58. Previous plan was 70... 75, I think. Nathan?
I didn't print that variance. I brought the site plan through, but I didn't print the variance permit.
Said all the same storm water. Also, the water utility is going to be updated. You're going to reroute hydrants.
We're doing some of those. We're coming around the back. And as... When we get to the stage where we're sitting down, just like was going to have to happen before, we don't know exactly where everything is. And there's a bunch of notes on the plan to work with the fire department and the water department. So that'll still happen. So we are still bringing the water around the building, but mainly from the fire pump room on to service the fire loop and fire protection of the building. It's slightly reconfigured, but... And we've redone some of the hydrants, but if they have any comments when we get to that stage, when the fire protection engineer sits with the fire department, or they have it peer reviewed, or whatever they do, you know, if we need to add a hydrant, we'll add one.
Okay. And then in that corner next to the retention basin, there's a tank, a silo or something, next, a little further to the right, yeah?
Yeah.
That was going to be cleaned up, right?
It's going to be cleaned up, but they're also working on, as they work through the process with the sewage receiving authority and pretreatment and stuff, what we had targeted for those areas. A, we're going to clean it up, and B, at some point, they are going to have to improve their pretreatment and holding capacity to meet the metric of pretreatment for the sewer authority as they increase flows. And that's a separate agreement that's...
Separate project.
That's with the town manager and everything else. And they've kind of started looking at some of those things. We didn't get too far in the last project, but yes, those areas are...
That happens directly to the DPW.
Yeah. Those things are all still going to happen.
Okay. Okay. And then, what's not showing in this is the extension of Catania Oils. The... There was a little concern about the landscaping at the back of their property.
There was erosion, yeah.
Yep. Is that... What's it... Does that stand?
What we've done thus far is when we did our original survey for this building expansion, that construction wasn't finished.
Right.
What we've done at this time is we went and resurveyed it and make sure any property, any retaining walls that we have to put on the property line are shown correctly and at the right height.
Yeah.
Which I had guessed that before. I don't think I had to change it. So...
To be clear, the roof drains, I have a copy of their plans. The roof drains are not supposed to discharge onto our property. There's not supposed to be retaining... There's not supposed to be...
Big slope.
Any of that stuff.
None of that.
The property owner has been in contact here and there with the butter about this. It sounds like there's maybe some corrective action happening. I don't really know the extents beyond that, aside from like, we would like to see it fixed.
Right. So I think when we...
That's something that Charlie would be...
Can we talk to Charlie?
Yeah.
We got to talk to Charlie.
The town had gone out, I think, a year ago or so, and was going to talk to them as well. We also talked to them, and I didn't personally, but Tom Gibbons did the first time. And I think that the landowners have been in touch. And what's really going to wind up happening is they'll probably fix the roof drainage to not have a discharge, and there probably is a pipe that they can get to.
Yeah.
And then B, they'll probably share in the cost of the retaining wall, since the encroachment of the soil came under the property.
Yeah.
And that will be a deal that they'll work out together, to share the cost of the retaining wall rather than removing all of the fill. We'll remove the portions to make the project work to the property line, and they'll share the costs of the retaining wall.
Great. And forgive me if you've already said this, but what's the timeframe, expectation, and when you'd like to start, or?
Their plan, currently, they have issued some preliminary drawings for high-level GC pricing. I think they're looking to start this summer, early summer. We had submitted a phased, Phase 1 of 2 building permit to the building department. I think the second, Phase 2 of 2, will be probably in about a month or so. So they're hoping to get... Their big date is next August. I think they want to try to get operations because it ties with their production timing. I guess the fall's like a really busy tofu production time. So they're...
Must be post-soybean harvest.
I wish I could tell you.
It's funny, their products are found all over the country. They produce a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah. So, go ahead. Will Air be the number one tofu producer?
I... They're doubling... They're planning on doubling their production, which is what was permitted before, so.
Okay. They're going to do it all with less building.
With less building.
They're going to ship it out. Maybe they've got another freezer or something. A lot of it's going to be freezer.
Yeah.
There've been major breakthroughs in tofu production.
I have no idea. We don't really... We don't really know.
Yeah.
We don't know. We're...
It's an impressive operation.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. And then, sorry, one last serious question, which is, snow removal, is it still the same?
We left it all the same, all the areas that we showed, the snow storage and all the conditions will be the same. The operation and maintenance plan for the storm water remains the same. And there's no proposed changes to any of that stuff.
Okay. So, yeah, go ahead, Charlie.
No, sorry. I just asked Danny, and I don't know the answer, maybe Mr. Disson would know. Does any of this need to go for... Do we get input from town departments where we don't need to do that?
No, they already went to the town departments. No one had any comments.
Got it. Thank you. That's the double check.
Yep.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, no, no problem at all. So as I understand, the two outstanding issues are the status of the variance with the ZVA and the erosion at Catania. Those are two outstanding we need to get results, answers for. Okay, good.
Well, so the erosion with Catania is outside of the planning board's purview.
It is.
But it is... But I do understand what you mean. It's something that I will follow up with Charlie and Heather and I.
Right, because we don't want silt running down there either.
Correct.
Yeah.
Exactly.
It brings to mind the old adage, "Good walls make good neighbors."
It can. Okay, good.
And then, on the retaining wall, we'll definitely have to figure that out, because we want to make sure that that variance is in place. And if it's not, then we'll have to make sure that that gets approved, you know, prior to the planning boards.
Yeah, or prior to building permit.
Right, yeah, exactly, depending on how we, you know, if it gets... How it gets conditioned.
All right. Further questions? I don't know. Is there anyone in the public who would like to ask a question? I'm going to open up to Zoom as well. If anyone on Zoom would like to answer a question, if you put your hand up on the Zoom. Okay. So I believe next step, you've prepared a decision for us to review at our next planning board meeting?
Yep. And then we'll also check with, you know, on the variance.
Beautiful.
I'll check with Sam with that, and then have her read it to you guys on, did it expire, did it not, and what the process is on applying for it.
Yeah. And zoning board of appeals meets monthly. So keep that in mind.
We'll probably have that answer pretty quick. I don't think we've ever meant to check that box, to be honest with you.
If I remember.
We're human. Things happen.
Yeah, if I remember, it came pretty quickly after it was submitted in 2022, I think.
I don't remember exactly when we got it. We got it just before we came here. We started in December. I remember our first hearing here was in December.
So we might keep right on the line.
Over the break, I think.
Second Wednesday.
At the...
Third Wednesday.
The zoning board's third Wednesday of the month.
Yeah, so I'll have him... I'll reach out to Sam and have her, you know, get you the information for, you know, tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, so continuance to...
Do we need a continue for a public meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Do we need a vote?
You? Let me just check on the next date. So our next meeting is, so, May 14th, we would be having a meeting, but since it is election day, we're not. We're not having meetings that day. Our next meeting is May 28th.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow. And so that... And that meeting would be to, you know, prepare a decision?
Yep.
Share it with us?
Yeah, and I'll get it to you ahead of time.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Good. All right, so we need a...
A motion.
Do a motion continue?
Yep, to May 28th.
I think you make a motion to continue the public meeting for One New England Way, map 17, Lot 18, to the next Air Planning Board meeting of May 28th, 2024.
Ken, how do you vote?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We'll see you on the 28th.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Do we... You know, I'm so embarrassed. I don't remember if we opened 33/3 before. Yeah, 33 is already open.
So we do not need to have a public hearing announcement?
Nope.
So just need to represent this... What's that?
We need to move to continue the public hearing.
Oh, no.
No, no, it's already open, so he's here. So we just continue the process.
Good evening. Brandon Ducharme with Davey Ross Associates. At the last hearing, we went over, presented the site plan and storm water management permit. We went over some of the comments that we had received to date, and we had scheduled a site visit with the board. We took a look. We had surveyed state, the limits of the right-of-way. And then, based on that sidewalk and working with the DPW, we've updated the plan to address the comments.
So as you can see, he has... They've updated the roadway to have the connection with the downtown Marshall Street, tying that in, making sure that the storm water also ties into the rain garden. And they did address the comments. They did provide those comments.
Those were what?
Yesterday, they were provided to us. So I did have a chance to kind of to go through them. Most of the comments were addressed. The... I would just want to have Matt come and speak on the addressing the discussion on Third Street to Marshall Street.
Hey.
Good to see you, Matt.
Good to see you, too. Yeah, so I gave this kind of a quick review, and I agree with Danny that our comments seem to be addressed with this plan.
Mm-hmm.
At this point, obviously, we only got the plan yesterday, but any comments that we do have would be very, very minor.
And as I understand from the April 18th memo that you and Dan sent, so you've addressed two of the big questions. One is, can the new bio-retention basin handle the water flow? And you answered yes. So that's an obstacle that's been cleared, and you've asked the applicant to make sure the water drains that direction. And the second one is a superior resolution to the tail end of the street. And that, I think that my understanding is that instead of having two separate contracts at two different times, it's a once and done, but that portion of the... From, I believe it's at this point right here, this point from here, the town will negotiate with the applicant on the cost of that. Is that the understanding?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So obviously, we don't have a written... Yeah, we don't have a written agreement. There's no pricing.
Exactly. So that will be coming, a written agreement, pricing, all that will come.
I think what we would do would just be, that would be a condition within the decision as the agreement.
I thought the site visit was exceptionally productive and very helpful. I think I certainly got a much greater understanding of the flow of the street. And also, there were concerns raised by the butters about the trees coming down, but it became quite clear that the few that have to come down are because they're in the way of the street or the buildings. And then frankly, a lot of the other materials of dubious quality. It's dead or dying. So it seems like there still remain some trees outside of the scope of the building that will remain, but I felt satisfied after the site visit that the applicant's approach is entirely reasonable. Anything further? So we haven't had a chance to review the materials that were just submitted. So I believe that what we want to do is have that opportunity, then we'd be able to prepare at the next meeting.
And I'll have a decision.
You mean, have a decision?
Have a decision ready for the next meeting, and I'll get that over to you ahead of time, so you can review it as well.
And that would be the 28th, of course.
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, any comment?
Yeah, just want comments, questions.
I'll go through you, but to the developer. So we didn't talk about, this is a site plan and a stormwater.
Yep.
Do we have the option to request and ask the applicant to supply tree, street trees, like every 25 to 30 feet or something on a new strip of road? We typically would do it if it was a subdivision, but we don't have a...
Yeah, this is not a subdivision, so we don't have that.
But if it's a site plan, we can request landscaping updates and things like that. So would that be, make sense to Aho to probably install some, you know, some good-sized tree trees along that new road to make up for the trees that are being cut down? Matt, what do you think?
I mean, personally, obviously, there's a fair amount of trees there. I'm not sure what the exact plan is, whether to retain all of those that would not be cut down by the...
There's nothing left. After you grade it and everything, there'll be nothing left, right? I mean, pretty much, you put a machine in there, it's gone.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, between the... Certainly between the houses and the other portion of the road.
Yeah.
I mean, looking at that, I mean, those houses are essentially set back 22 feet from the back of sidewalk, so, you know, there's not a lot of area. Plus, we've got those subsurface infiltration areas that, you know, we can't...
Plant them.
Plant within those or immediately adjacent to those.
I just think it'll have an impact on, you know, that we thought it through a little bit, and it might satisfy the neighborhood a little more to see that, after everything's gone, that some new stuff has been put in. Might have to be looked at as to how big it gets. Maybe it can't get too big or something, but I think D and Aho would probably go along with something like that, so I'd bring it up.
If you're reading the language you're asking, I'm sorry I was unable to make the sidewalk the other morning. Having been down there before, Third Street comes around, Marshall Street comes down, it kind of turns into this thruway that goes towards and over that bridge that's on there. Is that... That's still in that corner, correct?
Yes.
So when the road gets defined, that thruway is more or less going to become abandoned and then be allowed to turn back into natural?
You're talking about the...
The gravel that's off the side.
There used to be a road that went over that bridge.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? It's just kind of got... Whether it's a road or not, people have used it to get through there years ago. So... And so if we delineate the road, that's going to be...
So that's all done. It's been the whole... Well, you go ahead, Matt.
It's Matt's project.
That's the project.
I know it's Matt's project. I'm just asking.
We just did a very recent... Actually, it's still in progress.
Yeah, I haven't been down there. I haven't been there. Well, you know, Matt, I was not walking around for like four months, so...
That's done now.
You should go see Matt's project.
What you see is there's a path right there where the curb is broken.
I can see the path on that. That's why I'm asking is, what I guess what I'm asking what I'm asking is, is this the future, or is this also representing what's today? And the answer is represents today.
Part of it does.
Yeah.
Most of it.
Partially, because, because that leads me to the question, Mr. Diskins, is if we added street trees, where would you request that they be added? Along the horizontal of Third Street in front of the homes, or?
Correct.
On the curve, okay.
Within, it would be on their lots.
Got it.
Because the twenty-five foot is not wide enough to put so-called street trees within the right-of-way.
No.
So, yeah, it's just a request.
And I'll go look at your work.
Tomorrow.
Sure. Thanks, Matt.
Yeah, kind of the areas that I can see are, you know, kind of between the houses, yeah, right where you are there, potentially. And then similarly, you know, break kind of between those, those two parts there.
Yeah.
Only request that DPW would have would just not have the, if there were landscaping there, just not have it right up against the sidewalk, so there isn't.
Correct.
An uplift of.
A reasonable approach, but reasonable people will solve the problem.
And I know you're asking for street trees, which are typically tall and skinny.
Like eight to ten feet, you know, to start with.
If, if anybody noticed, the magnolias are in bloom right now, it's gorgeous, so.
Something.
All right, Nathan?
Uh, the, um, a butter was here last, last meeting, on the property to the north of Third Street. Do, is it necessary, I'll put this out to the, the, uh, the whole party, is it necessary to have any kind of agreement, or is there already an agreement of grading and at least seeding, what's going to be restored from their property, and who's?
Yeah.
Who's responsible for that?
That's, that's, that's one of the comments that I had, and they had already agreed that if what, they would, um.
Okay.
Uh, they would grade it, loam and seed.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathleen?
When you do actually sell the homes, is there going to be some information provided to the folks that buy it, where and where they cannot plant? Um, like, I imagine someone, like, you naively decide to just, like, plant a green giant and then, what?
Just a little louder, we can't hear you behind you.
Oh, um, is there going to be information provided to the owners of where they can and cannot plant? And then I think it was clear that you can't plant in the vicinity of the large, uh, box units, but I think there was a discussion last time about some sort of swell curvature, can that, can someone plant in the swell? I don't, I don't know, like, is this information provided to homeowners and?
Yeah, I don't really see anything preventing them from planting within that swaled area between the houses, as we talked about.
Okay, so that they can.
Yeah, as long as, you know, it continues to allow the drainage to get through.
Yeah.
And then in terms of, you know, anything being provided to the homeowners, um, there hasn't been anything prepared, I mean, this is kind of.
New.
A recent discussion, but certainly if there's concern, given the fact that, you know, given that the right-of-way is so narrow and the back of the sidewalk really is right up against that lot line, um, we could certainly provide something, you know, just.
I just don't, like, can you put a swing set on top of that? Can you put raised beds?
So on the subsurface stuff you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, so there is operation and maintenance that will be provided, and that's all in that agreement in terms of the stormwater areas, like what can and can't be done, the routine maintenance, the inspections.
Okay, so they will know, like, this part of your property, like, no swing sets, no raised beds, no, okay, yes.
Yeah, and that will be referenced within the decision and in the O and M, so that everyone, so when you look at, so that within the deed as well, that references all those.
Okay, and that is just on those big box things, not so much on the swells?
Correct.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Good. Any public comment? Pauline? Any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great, Joseph? Okay, thank you. And so, next steps, Danny?
Um, so, uh, we'll, you know, get, go fully through all the, the site plan, just to make sure there was no, you know, out, final comments. I'll work on the decision, get that over to the applicant, let them review it as well, for the next meeting.
Perfect, that's great. Great, how good are you?
Do you need a motion to continue?
I believe we do.
I would like to make the motion to continue the public hearing for thirty-three, Third Street, map thirty-four, parcel one thirty-six, to the next air planning board meeting on May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
Thanks, Jeff.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Ken?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, we'll see you on the twenty-eighth. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
And next up, I. We have representatives of ninety-one Groton Harvard Road.
Yes, you gotta open up the public hearing, which I can't even notice somewhere.
There is a public hearing notice somewhere?
Yeah.
It may be on the website. I can pull it up. I can pull it up on the website.
Danny, I'm assuming you're pulling the site plan?
Yep. Hi, I just have to read something.
Sure.
Notification about his public hearing notice, the Air Planning Board will be conducting a hybrid public hearing at six fifteen PM on Tuesday, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, in the first floor meeting room at Airtown Hall, One Main Street, to consider the site plan and stormwater applications submitted by North Atlantic Concrete for the property located at ninety-one Groton Harvard Road, Air Massachusetts. The applicant is proposing to redevelop a portion of the site by demolishing the existing building and constructing a new commercial building with parking and utility service connections. The applicant is also seeking a stormwater permit for a major project under the stormwater bylaw in coordination with the site plan review. For more information, please contact the air planning office at nine seven eight seven seven two eighty-two twenty, extension one four four, or planningatair dot ma dot us. The applicant is North Atlantic.
Can you share the screen?
Applicant is North Atlantic Concrete, Two Seventy-Ear Road, Unit One, Harvard, Mass, zero one four three two. Uh, date of hearing, Tuesday, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Time of public hearing, six fifteen PM, location of public hearing, Airtown Hall, One Main Street, Air Massachusetts. Zero one four three two. Copies of the application are available at the Airtown Clerk's Office and with the Administrative Coordinator, Third Floor, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursdays from eight AM to four PM, Tuesdays eight AM to six PM, and Fridays, eight AM to two PM, or by emailing s b e n o i t at air dot ma dot U S. Thank you. So, uh, do you want to set this up first, just give us a context, and then we'll turn it over to the applicant, and then questions, et cetera.
Mr. Chair, we move to open the public hearing.
Oh, we do.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to open the public hearing for ninety-one Groton Harvard Road, map thirteen, lot eight.
Seconded.
Uh, Ken, how do you, uh, any further discussion? Ken, how do you vote?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous, we can start.
Okay. Uh, so, the applicant is, uh, they're, they've submitted for site plan review and for a major stormwater management permit. Uh, the applicant's proposing a, uh, you know, to demolish the old existing, uh, building and, uh, construction of a new building, as well as, uh, proposing subsurface infiltration for stormwater. Um, the applicant is a, it's a, an existing non-conforming use, um, within a residential zone, A one. Um, the previous use was a, uh, similar use, and, um, the building commissioner, uh, provided them with an opinion that this was a similar use, and, uh, so the use was continued, uh, was grandfathered, and it's continued to be, um, uh, going, um, and, uh, I think I'll just turn it over to him.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is LeBoteau, I'm a project engineer at Ghostsmith Preston Ringwall, GPR for short. Here with me tonight is Bruce Ringwall, who's sitting in the audience, and we're here tonight as representative for the applicant, uh, North Atlantic Concrete, and here with me is represent, uh, is a representative from NAC, Tina Nutting, as well as, uh, is it Tom?
Matthew, who's the owner?
Who's the owner? So, to. To, um, to kind of follow up what, um, Danny had mentioned about the, the project site itself, the project is located at ninety-one Groton Harvard Road. As you can see here, this is an existing, uh, conditions plan slash demo plan for what we're planning to do. Uh, the, the project site is located south of the, um, air transfer station. Across the street from the high school, and north of, um, conservation land.
Mm-hmm.
Um, under the ownership of Town of Air. Bordering the east side of the project site, you have the upper Flanagan Pond, there is, um, there is a, a well-in area that was flagged by a blue Oxbow, and located, um, by our office. As you can see, um, this is the edge of well-in right here, and we're showing the one-hundred-foot buffer, uh, along the eastern property line. Also shown on, uh, this existing conditions plan, you'll notice that there is, um, an approximate, uh, habitat line that runs almost parallel, or almost parallel in line with the paved portion, disturbed portion of the project site. As part of, you know, prior to filing for a site plan review application with Planning Board, we had reached out to, um, a reviewer for, uh, Mass DEP, um, Melanie Cheeseman, who is, uh, you know, a person that we've worked with before in regards to habitat or MISA review. Um, you know, just as a, um, pre-application determination, whether or not we're doing any disturbance to the habitat area. Um, you know, her opinion is that as long as we're not accessing, um, into, um, this line shown here, or getting into the slopes, we're not doing anything to disturb the habitat and would require, uh, MISA filing.
Would not require?
Would not require.
Did you say require or would not require?
Would not require.
That's what I thought.
Excuse me, when you mentioned Oxbow staking out the area.
I could be wrong.
Is this perimeter, if you could lift this up a little bit?
They did the flags.
Did you flag this perimeter of the, so that, uh, this is visible, this, where we can actually get a sense of where this actually is?
My apology, Mr. Chair, um, is Matt Morrow who flagged the, the edge of well-in, and the edge of well-in is shown here.
Right.
As, uh, you see those small dots as, uh, flags.
Mm-hmm.
Those are the wetland flags, that's a location.
Those are the wetland flags, but is there anything to indicate the property line out there at this moment?
I think there is, let me just check. I don't know if there's some old stakes out there, I saw a few more.
We'll have to check whether or not we, we stake the boundary, I, I know for, for most projects that we do, um, we'll, we'll go out there and stake the boundaries, I'm not sure.
We'll, we'll need that so that we could do our site visit. My, my recollection is that there are either an iron pin or a concrete bound that are out there, but we'll double-check that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Did you say that you, if there isn't, that you need to have the corners marked?
No, he's asking for the property line to be sta, like, at least some stakes for, along the property line for the site visit.
Yeah.
Okay.
The corners should be sufficient, right? You know, you don't have to, you're not asking him to put a line of stakes out there. All right.
I, I am asking just so that when we walk, it is, it will be visible and clear to us where the heck we're standing, in relation to the property line, whatever that means, if that means.
And, Mr. Chair, I might say, that's a fairly steep slope back there.
Yeah, it is.
So, you know, I don't, I don't see a lot of us tumbling around on a steep slope.
The only way you're going down there is down the trail in Conservation.
I just want to know.
Yeah.
This is the trail?
Yeah.
I just want to be aware of where things begin and end, and so, you know, in relation to this, like, that is important to me right there, so I get a sense of what's going on here, I understand this is yours, but I need to see where, you know, where it begins and ends, this is just.
I listen to you all. Okay. Getting back to the, uh, the project itself, so the, as, uh, Danny had mentioned, the proposed project is to tear down the existing, um, building on-site, and maintaining the existing non-conforming use that has been grandfathered in, and that determination was made by the building commissioner, um, you know, prior to submitting the application itself, we had scheduled a meeting with, uh, Tom Planner, um, Tom Engineer Matt, as well as Heather, the Concom Agent, and of course, Charlie, the building commissioner. Uh, it was under his determination that the, the project does not require any sort of ZBA filing for the existing non-conforming use, due to the fact that it is an existing site that's been there decades, and it's been grandfathered in. Uh, as you can see on the site plan here, you know, I, you can describe the, the project site as having about approximately two-thirds of it disturbed, that's currently being used for exterior storage, all around the side here, this back, there's some interior storage, as well as some office use inside the existing building. What we're looking to do is, you know, A, because this is a redevelopment project, we're aiming to reduce the previous cover on-site, while providing, um, drainage improvement in the form of, uh, subsurface infiltration, um, to the best that we can, to maximum practicable. So, scrolling down, here is our typical erosion control plan, um. I'll talk a little bit more about the erosion control once we get to the, uh, oop. Once we get to talking a little bit more about the slopes. So, this is the new proposed building that's going in. The front portion that you see here is for the existing, um, for an existing office used to, um, kind of expand upon, and, and, um, propose interior storage that has these garage bay allowing vehicles to come in and park, um, and two loading areas shown right here. As part of the project requirement, we're also proposing new septic leaching field, as well as tank, shown at the front here. This is the primary, and this is the reserve. We understand that, you know, a separate filing with the show of alley, um, the show of poor health will have to happen, uh, but obviously, um, it's going to come with the approval of the site plan review. So, on the northern portion of the site, we have an existing driveway that we're looking to slightly relocate, um, and narrow down ever so slightly, so that we're maintaining twenty-four feet of width, and providing, and, um, marking the existing parking spaces here, in addition to providing handicap parking spaces, um, approximately eight feet away from the building. On the eastern side, you have a much bigger, um, driveway opening that we're looking to shrink down, similar to the northern axis, twenty-four feet, coming in, and then we're providing a paved area to go along with the, uh, paved parking, uh, located eight feet away from the proposed building. Do you need me to zoom in on that, or?
Okay, thank you.
Located at the back of the building, we're proposing a concrete pad with, um, driving, uh, drying racks, um, this is really for the, uh, the needs of the, uh, business itself. Um, NAC, there's a lot of concrete pouring, so, you know, they have forms, equipments that needs to be tried.
They're going to clean the forms there, basically?
No.
No, you're not.
Those racks will be for lumber and materials, building new forms.
And building new forms? Okay, I thought you said it was for cleaning forms, I misunderstood.
No, my apologies, I misunderstood. So, as part of the drainage improvement on-site, we're proposing to capture the entirety of the proposed roof, and gathering it and conveying it through, um, a roof drain manifold system that eventually leads to, um, this drain manhole right here. This drain manhole right here is a drain manhole with a sump that acts as a, uh, a means of accessing for maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you can, you can jump in there with a jet vac and clean out the isolator rope, shown here in hatch.
Mm-hmm.
And the system has been designed to capture and retain, uh, zero-point-eight inch for the post portion of the site, um, providing infiltration and eventually overflowing through an outlet pipe shown here, to this location of a VBRAP apron, right here. On the northern side, we have, uh, capture collection system, uh, focused at this location here, let me just scroll to the next page, it might show better, there we go. Water, uh, stormwater is being directed from this portion of the site to collect at this, uh, structure here, this is a rain garden turret. Um, this is a new, this is a relatively new system that we're looking into, and we're, we're starting to use due to the fact that it has, uh, Mass DEP approval for TSS removal, as well as total phosphorus removal. Um, the biggest thing that, you know, we really want to point to is that because A Town of Air has adopted, um, you know, treatment for phosphorus removal, uh, phosphorus is not typically talked about in terms of, um, some of the BMPs listed under the current Stormwater Handbook, you know, the Stormwater Handbook is relatively outdated, so, DEP has started doing field tests with certain manufacturers to give them, uh, approval ratings, and what came with that approval rating is, you know, the, uh, the system that we're proposing here is called a focal point. It's, you know, to, to really dumb it down, or, you know, make it simplified, it's kind of, focal point is very similar to a rain garden, except that it provides, uh, a much better infiltration through the soil media, and it also has a, uh, structural, it's almost like a crease. And it also has a structural, it's almost like a crates, they're like plastic crates at the bottom, and it serves to kind of help infiltrate water as well as attenuate and clean. With this system shown here, it provides sufficient TSS removal and phosphorus removal to meet the standards that are shown under the air stormwater regs. I think with that, oh, just to talk a little bit about the landscaping. Right now, we are proposing some shrub plantings at the front of the building along the office portion, as well as really maintaining the natural buffer that's surrounding the site right now. You know, the, you have apovites that runs along the north. There's some here as well as roe at the front of the existing site that we're looking to maintain. We understand that there may be additional plantings that we'll have to provide, but we will, we have no problem providing them if we need to. But that's a further discussion. So I believe last week, we received comments from town planner Danny, town engineer, as well as Heather.
Yes.
Comcom Agent. We have started looking at the comments, but we haven't had a chance to prepare the response.
That's fair. So I was going to say, I wouldn't expect you this easy to have sufficient time to respond, but we could, we do, we can have those responses by our next meeting.
Definitely.
Long before.
Long before.
And if you'll forgive my three minutes.
Maybe not.
Will there ever be concrete washout at the site?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
We do all of our concrete washout on our job sites.
Thanks.
To kind of follow up with the review comments, I just do want to point out that, you know, once we open the questions to the board, I like to kind of take a little bit of time to kind of bring up a few points that were brought up during the, in the letters that we received. Because I, you know, we view them as kind of big ticket items that we hope to kind of, kind of talk things through and get those addressed so that we can better prepare the responses to the next meeting. So with that, I open questions to the board.
Thank you. I, I, I just want to frame it, the conversation a little bit. This property abuts the town's probably the most significant conservation, natural recreation area we have. It's precious. And this, I think the south slope is, of course, completely visible from the trail. And I am concerned about not just the aesthetic quality of that slope as it exists right now, but even its stability, especially with the presence of large trucks I just saw three, four hours ago. I took a walk over there. And it is alarming to me, you know, we're talking about heavy machinery next to a slope that seems to be made of film.
It's junk.
You know, and I'm just, I want, so I, part of the discussion, the conversation has to be an assurance, one, the structural integrity of that side. And then number two is somebody's aesthetic and cleanup considerations around there because as it exists right now, that's really problematic.
And just to quickly touch on that, there, there was an incident about a month ago in which a vehicle, a crane actually toppled over the edge and rolled down the hill on the slope.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Heather actually provided pictures in her comments. And that, that was one of the, it's one of our big reasons for, one, proposing, or one of our, asking for offense, and as well as the DPW also making their comment about reinforcing that slope and structure, that basically because of that, one of those, those issues. And based on that picture you just showed me today, the cranes are still being parked very close to that slope.
Yeah. Well, hold on. Still a little, yeah.
No, I just.
Okay. Could you approach a table, give your approach, please, come on up.
Certainly. Bruce Ringwall, GPR, I'd like to just respond to some of that real quickly because this site is, you mentioned, is a pre-existing site. It was used as for the uses that are being proposed, but with some different tenants. The landscape contractor that's on there has been there for many, many years, and the recycling and collection agency that sits in the southernmost side has also been there for many, many years. Prior to this, it was Burnham Trucking. There were tractors and trailers parked over this entire site.
They were packed over the entire site. They were packed over the top of the site that's developed already.
They were parked over this and that.
They were packed over the slope and the other third of this unbuildable that were parked at the top.
You can go and look at aerials. We've presented aerials.
The entire site you just said?
Over the course of time, they've been used, and the whole site has been used. It is in, that is in here in slope, not the, not the part that's wooded.
Exactly. It's not that, but that's the entire site.
Okay. I'm sorry, the entire?
Previously developed. That's what I said.
Yes, okay. I, I'm sorry, I can't apologize. You're a hundred percent in the detail direct. I'm looking at the image that's in front of me right now. That slope has been there for a long time and has had heavy equipment parked to it for a long time. We have not done anything to that slope. We have not changed that slope. We have no intention of changing that slope. Putting a fence up there is not going to prevent anything from going down that slope of the nature of the size it was there. It was not their employees. It was a piece of equipment that was returned back from a maintenance job. And what happened, we're not certain. They're still investigating that whole thing. The piece of equipment was sold. Now, hold on, let me finish, please. It rolled to the bottom of the slope. It did not go past that. It didn't go off of the property. It stayed right at the bottom of the slope. It did not go into the buffer zone. It did not go into the conservation lane. It stayed at the toe of the slope. It's been removed back up the slope. Now, we agree that something needs to be done to create a barrier, and I think that we've got a couple ideas that we wish to discuss with you and Matt over the course of the next couple of weeks and present to you. And I think that they make good sense and you'll find them equally, if not better than a fence. And they'll also address some other issues that we have here. As far as the structural integrity of that slope?
Yeah.
You know, we, we can also have the conversations offline with your staff about that and then come back with everybody's common decision. But this is a slope that's been in place for a long, long time. We're talking 50-plus years. And it's something that is not changed. It's not had any erosion from it.
I don't know about that. I can see the erosion myself. I just saw it today.
Pictures.
And, and also, two things before you continue. One, whatever the past history is, it's now your slope.
Correct.
Hundred percent.
It's now yours.
Hundred percent.
Two, and, and that, what that means is that we have to have confidence that whatever activity you're going, that is going on that surface is not going to, any activity on the site doesn't, is, is not threatened by or threaten that slope because it, it could be a hazard. And, and I don't think that's unreasonable of us to say, that's got to be secure. And the other thing that I want to be sure, you say you don't like the idea of fencing. It is quite clear that in the past, stuff has been pushed down the side of it and it's just sitting there. I need to be sure that no more stuff is going to be pushed over the side of it.
If, if you may, if you take, were to see pictures of this site prior to May of last year, actually, I think it was May of last year versus now, there is like night and day. They have hauled off, roll off after roll off of debris that was left, tires, all kinds of material, things that were in trailers that were never claimed, all kinds of debris. So they have done a massive amount of cleanup on this property to date, and they will continue to do cleanup on this property. They're good stewards. They've done phenomenal job on the, the projects that they work on all around the Commonwealth, including your DPW, your parking garage down here off of Air Road, off of Park Street, rather. They have a responsibility of keeping that stuff nice and be good stewards, and they will do that. But the issue of, you know, staying, you've got to stabilize that slope, you know, we have some plans for that, and we want to discuss those with staff and bring it back to you, but I just wanted to make that clear.
I just want to remind you, I understand that this has been around for quite a long time. The use is an existing nonconforming. That's it. Now you're coming to Forest for site plan review and for stormwater management permit. You now have to meet the standards now.
That's correct.
And so the whole site is within our purview to review.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes.
Jessica. I'm getting this thing, there's an argument here long before we have a discussion. So I'm going to, I'm going to ask a couple of questions. First, first things first. Believer and I was made aware of the fact that the machine rolled down the hill for early in the morning because I'm in a butter. I'm also been in the landscape construction industry often on my most professional, and we thought, my first question was, was anybody hurt? I understand nobody was hurt. Was it 70 ton, 100 ton crane? What went down?
It was a crane.
Yeah, a crane went down. So number one.
Fifty ton, yeah.
A 50 ton?
Sixty, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's a large piece of machinery. That large piece of machinery probably, I don't even want to ask what it costs, but we're talking something in hundreds of thousands of dollars. So it would, to me, it would be irresponsible as an owner to allow that to happen. So I'm just going to put this on the table, okay? There's an unfortunate thing that happened, my understanding is, and I haven't had a chance to follow up with conservation, fuel, storage, hydraulic fuels, hydraulic, there's lots of things in that machine that can cause problems, okay? You called it Upper Flannigan, and we now call it Pine Meadow Pond, but that's not even there. So we had an unfortunate situation, okay? I'm not a conservationist. I don't think a fence will hold in the 50 ton crane. I don't think it'll hold it. Please. But I also think a fence will hold the wildlife that walks through our area and impede, and impede the wildlife. We've got turkeys, we've got pheasant, there's a pheasant farm up there. You can't find ring neck pheasants in most of Massachusetts, but we got them in our neighborhood. We have a vixen who just had three kits on that slope. So I think there's a need to find a way to keep the expensive machinery out of the pond and off the slope.
Hundred percent.
So I would love to have this as a conversation with a lot of people involved, but I don't think having an argument about it in this room is going, excuse me, is going to get us anywhere.
I don't, I don't, I don't agree with the conversation of an argument.
Maybe I'm misreading.
It was just strong feelings here because there's a lot at stake.
I would like to state you are not misreading. There was a lot of strong conversation that came, sir. Can you remind me your name?
Bruce.
Bruce. It was delightful. I, I can tell you have a lot of feeling about what you just presented, but I don't quite understand why it came off initially as hostile.
I apologize if it came off as hostile.
Which I hope it's, I'm just going to keep speaking right now, please. I, I hope it's because you have a lot of passion for what you're doing and that we can continue to have that conversation. But I've been on this board for almost three terms now, or gonna, maybe if I get voted in. I haven't seen that level of initial emotion, and I hope that's not how we're going to have this entire conversation because I look forward to these types of conversations and the negotiations and the discussion where we learn about our properties and about how they value our town. But I don't really want to sit through a project with that level of emotion. So hopefully we can reset that with how you've talked, Jeff, and I appreciate that because...
I apologize if I came off of that.
Thank you.
And I also want to make it clear that at no point was the owner or the applicant's integrity challenged. That's not, that's not what's at issue here. And I have no doubt of the excellence of the work. It really is about the physical site, and, and the most outstanding part of that is that there, and it is an incredibly delicate and valuable area. I, I want to recognize Jessica Gino.
We haven't even got the board yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's come on. We haven't even got the board going yet.
We've had a hand with it. We can't speak to you.
We will get to you, Jeff. So that was maybe, it's a future, I'm looking ahead into the future. Okay. Thank you, Jess. Appreciate it. And, okay, please, sir.
So you've had your opening salvo of discussion.
We will, we will.
Okay. We heard from the applicant.
But can, is, I, I do want to let him say something, and I promise you, Ken, that...
Just to kind of follow up what, you know, Bruce had mentioned, as well as Jeff, the, you know, we're, we're not fighting back on the fact that it needs a barrier. The conversation about the barrier, we understand it is needed. It's, we just believe that the offense is not the correct method to go. We have discussions about Jersey Barrier, Mulch Birm, you know, a couple, a couple options that we have, you know, discussed, but we didn't want to provide a half-baked answer. So that's, that's kind of the, the angle that we're looking at.
Thank you. I think Ken wanted to...
Okay. And I'm going to add a sentence with a colon here. There are best practices in the construction industry for parking lodge equipment. They have to be followed or your insurance fails. Your insurance fails you. So there's just, we're talking half a million open machines, guys.
And, and I, and I understand where you're coming from.
People make mistakes.
No, and, and they do.
Yes.
But I have a photo just from, just from a couple hours ago where there's a crane literally right on the, right on the edge. So I'm just, I just, and I just want to reiterate, and I'm not, and I know that...
And I can believe we can come up with a solution going forward.
Oh, and I agree, and I'm just, and what I accept, I just want to clarify, I know the owner has cleaned up the site. You guys have done a great job.
And I, the only thing that I would add to that is when that crane went over that embankment, it really didn't, there was, first of all, there was no compromise, nothing compromised on the soil. Like it wasn't because the ground sank and the crane went over the banking, right? We're not exactly sure what went on, but the ground is just the same now as it was when that crane went over the banking. And when it got to the bottom of the banking, the worst that had happened was a couple of trees did get broken from the crane going down over and falling to the side, but there was not this great.
Yeah.
Failure of that, of that banking. You know what I'm saying? It didn't just fail and the crane went over. That's not what happened.
You stood around for a minute.
This was, this was something where either a brake didn't get set or it got left in neutral, it was dropped off by, by our maintenance company that we used to fix it.
Yeah.
Parked it. We don't, we really can't say exactly what happened, but I just want you to know that there was no failure of the ground underneath the crane.
I've never let a loader roll away from you in a snowstorm. I've never let that happen.
Right, yeah.
So, anyway, but thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we called it a head scratcher. We couldn't figure out because there was no...
Yeah, we don't really have an answer either, but we do know that the, the earth underneath it is not what made that crane go over the banking. It was something to do with the crane itself.
Right, thank you. Ken, did you have?
I've got questions and I've got, you know, comments, but I don't know what, how far we want to go yet. But I've got questions on the plans was submitted right away.
So there's a number of options. When we have, we do have questions on the plans. There's some waiver requests. I think some of them we could get to, at least three of them. The fourth one about stormwater may be more complicated. But I also recognize that there hasn't been sufficient time for the engineers representing the applicant to go with the comments.
That's the DPW comments.
Yeah.
Town Planner, DPW, and...
Yeah, let's do that. Well, what I'm feeling is, yeah, let's go ahead and ask, and get the question surfaced. And what the goal is, is to make sure, get the stuff, get as much as we can out, and then regroup to make sure what are the priority things that we can be best prepared for at the next, the next time we gather. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So I'd say, Ken, go for it, please.
Well, first of all, I would like to say thank you for taking an opportunity to come to Air and purchasing that property, and it's, I'm glad to see that somebody made a business decision like that. So inevitably, I think when we get done, it'll be a good decision for all of us, and that's what we're trying to get to. So I was surprised when Bruce said that there were multiple uses. I live right down the street, going to the north, on the first house to the north. And I walk by all the time and I talk to the Burnhams. I used to go on the site and chat with them. So I was surprised when you said there were other uses on the site beyond my understanding of what I saw in the past. It was mostly tractor storage, trailers. It certainly wasn't anything as heavy as the cranes that are there now. There was just no comparison whatsoever. Empty trailers mostly, things going in and out. And it was a very small business. It was not a big business at all. So I just didn't know we had multiple uses. So inevitably, we're going to end up with multiple uses.
Yeah, there's a, there's a landscape company.
And a textiles, and a textiles company that both work out of that space.
Out of that building.
Out of, as tenants. Nope, they don't use the building.
They just store it.
They use space on the lot.
Yeah.
On the, so I believe the landscape they use in this area is older.
Yep.
So those, those separations of concrete, look like concrete structures right there, those are there right now?
Yes, yep, always been there. As far as we know, they've always been there.
Yeah, okay. All right, so let's get to the plan. So I've got, you know, a bunch of questions here. The first question that I have is interestingly enough, your steel plans that you submitted in the elevations, they do not match the site plans. Steel plan basically shows the building to have two covered side entrances, one on either side, the north and the south. And the building dimensions are different on the steel plan, the building shows it at ninety and up by a hundred and fifty. And your submission is for eighty by a hundred and fifty, so I don't know if you know that.
Make some changes to the size of the building.
So you are aware that you turned in a plan that shows those entrances on both sides of the building? The steel plan.
That will get, need to be updated.
Excuse me?
That will need to be.
A little louder, I can't hear you really.
That steel plan will have to be updated to follow the distance.
While we're on the steel plan, it also shows the roof with a pitch on both sides with a high point in the middle.
Yes.
So my question then leads me to, first of all, we talked about the dimensions of the building don't match, okay? The fact that the roof system is different, I'd like to know how you proposed your single point of roof drainage to pick up the other side of the building. So showing the roof drain from one side of the building to a twelve inch pipe, but the pitch is only half the building.
I understand. So we included a site plan notes on here to say that all, the entirety of the roof will have to get picked up with a roof drain manifold system. So I need down spot location that, you know, we could potentially add right here. It will all get picked up throughout and eventually get to that point right there and then out to the chambers.
So you're not showing it now?
We're not showing it now, but is entirely feasible.
We're gonna imagine it, that it's gonna happen that way.
Yes.
I use our imagination.
It's entirely feasible due to the elevations, the vertical elevation that we have from the roof drain shown to the manhole itself.
I think what Ken is saying, he wants to see it on the plan.
We can certainly show it.
Because I was figuring that was a flat roof with that, you know, one point of outlet like that.
I see.
And just to touch, since you're talking about the drainage, you have a note up there that talks about the foundation drain?
The second note.
Is there, is there a reason for needing a foundation drain?
Well, I believe the foundation drain is for the footing for the building itself. I understand that, you know.
You didn't hit groundwater and it was like a hundred and forty-six inches, something like that?
I believe that it's standard practice to have foundation drains for footing, even if groundwater is not a concern.
You're basically saying it's a note, a common note for your drawings, it's not specific to this plan, is that what's happening?
It was specific to this plan, but change, we're having discussions internally as to check onto it. The building code says if you don't have, show a founding, foundation drain, you have to have an engineer's certificate or letter addressing why. And so we have to discuss, you know, whether we're gonna do an engineering letter or we're gonna talk with Charlie about that, as to how he wants to address it, if he feels it's even necessary. Because all it is is a frost wall footing, you know, so whether or not it's necessary or not. And you're right, we don't anticipate collecting a lot of groundwater, if any at all.
Just to continue on that, because we'll just wanna see that on the plan as well.
Where's the outlet for the?
If you're gonna have a foundation drain. Because you say it's gonna tie into this subsurface infiltration. No, I know, but he's saying, the note says that it's going to tie into the subsurface infiltration. So we'll wanna see where it's gonna be tying into it.
Okay. Most likely run to the Y for the roof drain, but we'll.
Okay, typically when we do a site plan, we have a provision for enclosed dumpsters. We see a concrete dumpster pad and an enclosure. Are you showing that anywhere?
Currently, we do not. We don't have a location or enclosed location for a dumpster. We'll have to either look into that or have that addressed.
And the other thing we do, but I'm not sure it applies here, is bicycle accommodation, right, for bicycle.
It was part of my comments.
Talked about it already?
Technically. I'm the guy. It was part of my comments as one of my review, I mean, I think they could ask for a waiver from it.
We see that we're going to be asking a waiver for the bicycle rack.
Okay. Yeah, it was, it was one of my comments.
I'll be able to hit if I can park my electric bike in.
We can have designated George parking for your bicycle.
The, I guess everybody talked about the fact that the landscape wall is sitting on top of the infiltration system. So I saw that on other notes, I had written it down too, but I should've read the other notes first. Take that out of there. This is just a couple of quick aesthetic notes for the owner. So the front of the building, I presume that we just talked about the entrances are not gonna be on the side of the building, it's gonna be on the front of the building.
It's gonna be on the front.
Basically, the submitted, we require some elevations with our site plan. So those submissions are not adequate, we'll have to see something else to show us.
Yeah, we'll need some sort of elevation.
What the elevation really is, rather than the proposed steel, you know, erection plan. I think it's a good, I always, I bring this up all the time when people come in with the building, but in your case, because you're in the business and you've got so much concrete work, I would recommend that you put in a concrete sidewalk in the front of the building instead of the bituminous pavement that shows on the drawing. Proposed bituminous concrete walkway, but I think this business wants a pure concrete walkway. Maybe something even special at the front of the building, other than a pavement. That's up to the owner, because we don't have control over that, but it's a suggestion. When the other, when you took down, there's been another portion of the building that you already took down?
No, we haven't taken anything down yet.
Okay. Just removed the junk that was back there, that's basically what you did?
Correct. Just junk, yep.
Okay, so that's the, that was the core of the other building, but there was another structure or something back there that you must've got bit up? No?
No, nothing.
Removed some of the concrete blocks that were holding up portions of the yard area, but.
Okay, right.
No, there was no other building, just what's there now.
Okay. Did you guys do any hazardous twenty-one E reports and things like that for your own knowledge?
We did, what was that, one that they?
Twenty-one E.
Twenty-one E.
Did a twenty-one E?
For, yeah, for the bank, the bank had.
Yeah, okay, good. When you showed the new infiltration system to the north, which you call a focal point.
Ken, can you tell us what sheet you're looking at so we can join you on?
That one right there. Focal point.
Yep.
So you see two things here, there's an arrowhead shown going towards the street. Is that proposed to be an overflow type thing to the street? If that actually fills up and doesn't handle it, it'll overflow?
Yes.
And there's a little bit of riprap and that's it?
A little bit of riprap. See if I can go to the.
I think you better concentrate on making that a deeper sump or something like that with most, so that there's a chance that if it overflows, it stays right there. No, you can't do that.
Well, it's not a matter of Ken can, it's a matter of meeting the
The code?
The pre and post runoff and the treatment, and that's what.
So I'll point to this real quick, just to describe the system itself. So water will come in through this rain guardian. It has a top grate and a side grate that dumps out water onto a bed of riprap here before going over this landscape area. This landscape area, you'll have, I wanna say thirty inches of soil media that is specked out by the manufacturer, as well as these plastic crates that are set at the bottom. So between the grates as well as the soil media, you got your, you know.
Storage.
Storage and attenuation. But, you know, when you have a hundred year storm, major storm is coming in, obviously it has, is going to pond up, and then it needs to discharge and continue to the right of way. We are proposing to provide armory and stacking it up so that on the lower portion, the portion that's closer to the road, will allow for approximately six inch ponding prior to spilling over the riprap and then spreading it over a span of, I wanna say six, seven feet of riprap apron, dispersing it before it gets to the right of way.
Yeah, I mean, if DPW is okay with it, I'm okay with it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to Matt about it because, and to Heather. I don't know if we can, if we allow that to go off-site.
Oh, I don't think you can.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Saying it's not gonna go off-site, it's gonna stay there.
I'm not gonna say it's not going off-site, it's currently doing that right now, uncontrolled, so.
Yes.
Right, but it's a different world now.
Management permit. So now you have to meet.
Right, so you have a pre and post.
DPW. Yes, but our bylaw does not allow it. Really?
We'll discuss it with everybody.
It almost looks like a break in the curb where it can go down over the curb or something, but I don't know, the planet is tiny. Some of the rest of my discussion about that was the fact that the bituminous concrete, you know, Cape Cod berm coming in only goes to the concrete sidewalk. So somehow we're proposing that all that drainage is gonna, it's not gonna go out to the street, it's gonna go across the new pavement, all the way across and then downhill to your, your little system.
Are you still talking about?
I'm talking about that system. So you're paving that lot, but we're trying to get the water into that new system. It's all a catch basin for lack of the right term, and then out to the retention area.
Yes.
And you're pretty much saying that your design, when they pave that, is gonna run all the water right into that thing? It's not gonna go out to the street, out the driveway.
So from this portion and up, you see the contour?
Yeah.
It's trying to channel that water. So for, from this corner right here going up, this portion really, into the high point right here, that is the extent of what we're capturing for this focal point system.
How's it gonna get across around that sidewalk and into that thing if it's coming along the building? Across those handicap spaces and whatnot? With the sidewalks in the way?
So this is flush with the.
It's all flush?
It's all flush.
There's no curving in there.
It's no curving.
Okay, if it's flushed, then it's just gonna go across the sidewalk and along.
No, the grate is higher along the building than it is out where the hook is.
Just, my comment is just basically, at the end of the day, when I walk over there and that's not working, I want you to correct it. That's honestly, for now. When it's paved, I think he's smart enough to know to pave it right, I'll take, I'll take his word for it. But I don't think it's shown how that's gonna go into that catch basin adequately, that's my own opinion, so. It's a biased opinion. And then the last thing we talked about, everybody talked about, was the outfall going towards the conservation land, but on their property.
Yeah, that's. Just on the rain garden, I think this is very similar to what Matt has just put in at Third Street and Marshall.
This is much smaller.
It looks, but it has the same inlet, it might be, if it is, it might be something to look at.
I know, he's got an outflow.
Yeah, I think what he's more concerned about is how, the path of the water. Yeah, oh yeah, no, yeah, I'm just going back to the design of it. It has a lot of, what we discussed, it seems to look a lot like that one.
It does.
And you were saying something about the.
Yeah, the outflow that everyone's concerned about, DPW and so forth and conservation and everyone else that Jess is probably gonna ask about. Is there a reason we cannot put the outflow closer, you know, just a, more of an angle away to the, this way? Just to get it further away from where it might runoff? Bring it out like this and run it this way, I don't know if that helps at all, because the slope is the same everywhere.
We certainly can, we picked that location specific.
Get it closer to the lot line, there is a lot line, excuse me, closer to the gravel surface, so this isn't paved over here, right?
It's gonna be gravel.
So I mean, just, as far as you can get it away from the slope, I guess, with as much riprap as can be done.
We can, we can certainly cut back on the outlet pipe. The reason why we chose that location specifically, because as you can see for the existing contour, it is at an area where it starts to flatten out. So it makes the most sense to armor that location and use it as a disperse point.
But you can make a location work.
We can certainly do that, yes. So we can certainly cut this back, tighten the contours a little bit, you know, bring it back five, eight to, maybe five to eight feet, somewhere between there, so that we can give a bigger riprap pad.
And while we're talking about the stormwater, so the, you're gonna be regrading all this area up here and up here.
That is correct.
What's, how are you guys dealing with the stormwater from this? Because it's not being picked up with the subsurface infiltration, which is supposed to be catching all of the redevelopment area.
Certainly. So that's the further conversation that I wanna talk a little bit about, the waiver itself. As far as the grading associated with this section right here, the grading as proposed is just a way to tie into existing grade. We're not doing anything that's different from the existing conditions now. Currently, this area, you have, you know, a large area of compacted gravel, rap, that's sheet flowing uncontrolled.
But you're raising that, you're raising, that's three oh five. And you're raising it to three fourteen.
Right, I understand.
So it's not like you're keeping the same existing contours. Yes, I understand you're trying to tie into the contours, but that's redevelopment, you're raising it four feet because you're gonna have those loading bays on the left-hand side are gonna be tailboard height, right? And then you're gonna have a retaining wall, so it's, it's considered redevelopment and needs to be captured by the subsurface infiltration system.
I don't see how, so I understand that it is higher, but getting from point A to point B is still the same change in elevation?
You're raising the site.
I understand.
So it's not the same, I, it's not the same argument. It's, it's not the same, yes, the water path is still the same, it's going the same place, but you're raising that four, five feet more.
So let's take a look. You have a contour, I need to.
This contour right here is three oh five.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
This contour right here is three oh five. This contour here is three eleven, that's six foot.
Yep, I understand. I'm just trying to see if I can zoom in a little bit closer.
Oh, you might have to, yeah. I don't know if you can, or bring that down to the bottom of the.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go. So if you can see, whoops, this is funky. This is the existing contour of three fifteen right here.
Yep.
We're actually cutting down this portion to about three thirteen and some change, two fourteen, let's say three fourteen.
Yeah.
We're going from three fifteen, from point A, to a point B of, let's say, three oh seven, right?
Yeah.
Now, we're currently going from three fourteen to three oh seven. Point three oh eight.
So I get what you're saying, but now we have a steeper slope here. Because this is three oh seven.
Is this portion not as steep?
It's steep back there.
So it is, yeah, but it's back here. And it's, and it's a smaller area, and I understand it's going down there, but now you're expanding that slope. It's going back this way, it's going, you're raising this up six feet. So it has to be handled, it's considered redevelopment. And so you can't just let it wash sheet flow off the site.
We'll, we'll take that into consideration. I think this is a bigger conversation to be had that I wanna get to, and that's really pertaining to the waiver itself. But we'll, we'll consider that.
I just wanna. I just wanna clarify, I don't know if that's, that's not something that I think is up for discussion. That is within the stormwater management, like, like that's what has to be done. The waiver you're requesting is for TSS removal, phosphorus removal, meeting the eighty percent of that.
That is incorrect.
Or it, let me just, so you're looking for redevelopment stormwater management performance standards, allow water quality, retention volume, and pollutant removal to be provided only for the redevelopment portion of the project site?
Yes, that is correct.
So that is considered redevelopment?
Yep, and that is what we have to go back and consider if we were to consider this portion as redevelopment. Because the way we look at it is getting from water from point A to point B is currently sheet flowing uncontrolled. And we're maintaining the same characteristic as an existing condition.
That's.
If the conversation were to come around and say that, you know, we do consider this portion as redevelopment, we have to reassess and actually look at picking up the area. And that's, that's what I mean when I say we have to kind of reconsider it a little bit.
So is that what the waiver's requesting? That you, so that this area does not have to be? to be?
No, I, I don't.
So I guess like that's where I'm confused, because you said that has to do with the waiver.
No, it doesn't, right?
But they're two separate things, I think.
They are different things, right?
Yeah.
In your estimation, when you use the term redevelopment, are you only considering the new paved areas?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Okay, so, yeah, that's, that's not the definition of redevelopment. Redevelopment is any area that you are going to be, your grading, adding, filling is definitely considered redevelopment.
So we will reassess the area. If it needs to be picked up as part of redevelopment, then we have to address it accordingly.
Okay.
Obviously, what I meant by pertaining to the waiver is more specific to the limitation of the infiltration chambers themselves, and what we can realistically provide in terms of, you know, point eight inch times impervious cover.
And on that waiver, so, well, I think we're going to talk about that waiver, I just, since, since we're on that.
But I want to make sure everyone's had a chance.
Yeah, so we'll get that.
We will discuss it, but I wanted to make sure everyone has had a chance to voice their concerns and stuff. And I just want to give, yep.
I was going to ask one question. You show a storm drain in the lower left-hand corner?
Yes.
The storm drain here?
Yep.
Is that to pick up and bring it back to infiltration?
Yes. So starting from this corner?
Yep.
You'll pick up this portion here?
Yeah.
And?
And it's going to pipe it back to the infiltration system that you've got right there?
Yes.
So if we move the outfall from the overflow towards that storm drain, we may actually be introducing the water back into the system we got?
No.
No, he's, they would just regrade it so that it wouldn't go that way.
Just wanted?
Yep.
Be clear.
Yeah, no, that, that was something that he clarified, he did say.
Okay, I missed that point.
He said they would bring it back five feet, and then he would change.
I just missed that point, I just didn't want to, okay, thank you.
Ken, did you have more? The only last thing I have for tonight is that, I think you mentioned earlier that you had reached out to its natural heritage, is that the idea?
Yes.
And they are going to issue a?
Letter of note taking?
Note take letter, letter of note take. Are they, are they going to give you a letter that says it doesn't even apply?
I don't believe it's in the form of a letter. We reached out as, almost like a preliminary assessment. We showed her the limited work, and we basically asked her, you know, do you feel that we need to apply for a, an application for a MISA filing? And she just responded back in an email stating that she does not feel that we would need to file for a MISA review, and, you know, unless we're doing work within the habitat area.
Can we get a copy of that?
Sure.
So is, is, is that one of the reasons why there would be a little bit more hesitance on trying to stabilize that slope?
No.
No.
No. Okay. Because if you did, then, then you'd have to apply for a MISA.
Yep.
All right, okay, just, I just, clarification.
That's enough, okay. Julie, you look like you have a question.
No, I'm just deeply agressed.
Nathan and Jeff?
Maybe ahead of the game, but I like to ask questions when they're out of order. Will you be storing fuel or doing any machine repair on maintenance and repairs?
We have outside service for our machine repair, it goes out to be fixed, or it gets fixed on our job sites.
Okay, good, thank you. There was a tank.
Yeah, that was one of my comments as to what that tank was.
Okay, go ahead, there was a holding tank.
Yeah, that was one of my questions.
We are going to have a diesel tank, yes.
There will be a fuel stored tank on it.
That's for, yeah, for our trucks to be filling on site, yeah.
Exactly. And I just, I don't really, I don't know if it's, are you ready mix, or are you a?
He's a form.
We, yeah, we form, we form concrete.
Oh, you're a form, you don't do the mix at all?
Nope.
Got it, okay, cool, thank you. Then I want to ask about storing water and all that that goes into?
No.
No, you store the racks there, right?
Because I'm only, I'm only using the cranes, the racks, and the rack trucks.
Yep.
So, yeah, okay.
Yeah. You got Nathan?
Just a few, just echo where Ken started, which is glad to have this property developed, have a, have a business owner in here, the tax base of air is kept low because of a strong, strong amount of businesses. I would have, you know, if, if there is a short statement, even the next time we get together, on the business benefit of your industry to air, like we had with Nisoya, who was here before you, I think that would be valuable. The, the, I, I agree, I'll just stay with the high, hopefully with the high level, which is the concern of the south side of the property. I, I think the sentiment, and this is what I would promote, is what are the require, what are the requirements? And certainly there seem to be some requirements that got brought up. I don't know if there was a requirement for animals to be able to pass through, or not be able to pass through, but that's, as, as the, you know, turkeys come into our backyards, that might be one of the areas of the requirement. The, the other requirement was to not have debris exceed the area of development, so I think, I think we could phrase a requirement or come to an agreement on what's right for that, and then certainly heavy equipment, right? I would, I would, and keeping, you know, what's going to give a definition to, to your employees, to, to your service personnel, where, where, where vehicles should be. The, we've seen other, another development like this where it's a lot of gravel, and my concern with gravel is you kind of don't know where the, sometimes it's hard to know where the edges end, so that would be another area that we could discuss, is how does, how does the, how does the extent of what's development is used be defined in a way that doesn't evolve over time as, as, once, once there's an approved plan, the last thing anybody would intend and want to see is that then there's creep.
So you're talking about adding fill, adding fill, adding?
Yeah, or tire gets thrown over, whatever it is, but I think defining?
We've worked super hard to clean that place up, the outflow tires. Trust us, the cost to clean it up.
Yeah.
Far exceeds what would be worth us throwing anything over the side of that banking, so.
But I think a way to, like, when we do some other home developments, there are, and we have conservation land, there's, there's a marker put?
Yep, yeah.
In, in the ground. So I think some way to define, this is the use area, this is not the use area, I think that would be really helpful.
Yeah, and I think they were talking about like, maybe possibly proposing a berm or something, which would definitely help address that, like, you know, those options that we'll be discussing in the future.
From the board's perspective, I recommend that we stay at the requirements level and lean on the applicant for the solution.
Yep, yep, we have been working on those solutions.
And I would add, you know, I think the, the concern about the creep, realistically, the limitation there would be the side slope coming down. I don't think you can creep any further than we are right now.
Yeah, my.
You've got to push a lot of stuff over the edge to get a couple of feet. I'm sorry, guys, but the sheer volume you'd have to push over the edge to get a surface of that.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
But wherever the gravel ends today?
I see.
Will the gravel end there in 30 years? Right?
Yes.
So the, the conversation about the interior will definitely define that limit, so we'll, we'll take that into consideration.
Kathleen, did you have any questions or comments?
I don't, thank you.
Jess, you've been so patient.
It's okay.
Come on up.
Just a couple of comments for me from conservation, and I hope, even though Heather's doing her minutes, she gets to say something.
Yeah, she's, she's going to have an opportunity.
Yeah, when I was relieved to hear that the, the slope had not changed with the crane coming down?
Correct, yeah.
That it seems stable, I just would love that to be just double and triple checked, given the amount of rain we're now?
Yep.
Getting, and this last year was extremely heavy rain, to the extent that whether that can destabilize something that's been stable for 50 years regardless. Second, conservation, I think we're, like other comments, are concerned with the sheet flow coming from the, is that the east side?
Yeah, the, the south, this right here for the?
Yeah, well, from around the corner onto the east and heading south.
Yes, exactly.
So, yeah, moving that outflow pipe further away, I think is great, but we're also concerned with presumably more heavy equipment continuing to be parked on site. Heavy equipment does, over time, leak gas or oil, and with that being untreated and sheet flowing to the south, that's our concern, because that is the pristine conservation land down below that slope. So we would, I guess, love to see the pitch of that, while it's being regraded, sort of shifted maybe, to pitch things toward that subsurface infiltration system instead, so that then what flows out is treated, we just make that suggestion. And then just a third question is, where's the diesel tank going to be?
It's on the picture there, you can?
Yeah, it's.
Right there, right there.
Oh, I saw this.
That's not correct.
Oh.
That is, that is a DEP, MDC holding tank for the floor drain. Whenever you have a storage building, you have vehicles inside, it's required, you have an?
Separator.
You have a floor drain, and you have an MDC holding tank or separator. We're not looking to separate it to have it go into any drainage system, we're looking to have it as a holding tank?
And then it'll get?
That will be pumped as necessary.
Okay.
On the heart surface, on the upper, slide that image south just a little bit, please. Between that last rack in the building, there will be a dual compartment, double-walled, enclosed diesel tank, just like they've permitted on other property that they have leased on in town. It'll go through the whole fire department process for permitting, and it'll be just like their other tanks that they have.
Can you show that on?
Dual compartment diesel and DEF, right?
Excuse me?
Diesel and DEF?
Uh, just, just doing diesel.
Just diesel.
Because the last one I put in, I put a DEF tank next to it, and everyone was even happier with me. It's a lot cheaper.
Yeah.
It's a lot cheaper.
Yeah, no, it saves you money, and you don't have those plastic jugs everywhere.
Yeah.
They're a pain in the neck.
Can you show that on the plan as well?
That's, because that's why I've been, that's what I was looking for, is the diesel tank, yeah. And it'll have containment underneath it, all that, all the right stuff, all the right stuff on that.
We're, we're not permitting it at this point, we're, we're preparing, you know, the site plan for all this stuff. Yep, again, it's permitted their previous site, and they've proposed to permit this one as well.
One more question, Mr. Chair. So basically, the gravel is the gravel, and the gravel is the field where the trucks and the vehicles will move. So you park in different places, yeah, just like a, just like a yard, it's just a yard?
It's a yard, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, all I just wanted to again stress is, if it's being regraded, consider the pitch, and then I'd love to see if our conservation agent had anything to add.
Come on up.
I was tired of my other comments that were submitted, the only?
April 11th, right.
The only additional question I have at this time, given everyone's concerns with creatures still being able to access the site, which in my opinion is probably not the best place to have turkey and wildlife to be running through an active project site, but that's a moot point, I guess. Is the, the outflow that we're discussing about moving back, if we're going to discuss critters, maybe it's not the best place to put one, as ones, vivians and frogs and turtles will climb inside.
I think we do have a trash rack note. Okay. We do have a trash rack note for the flare dam section, specifically for the prevention of?
Yeah, and just, and then to make sure that we're not missing the fact that that is natural heritage rare species line, so that's the most important, outside the fact that it's, it butts conservation, that rare species line is on that site where vehicles are currently in the vicinity of parking. So we're going to be concerned about not putting a barrier to ensure that animals can still cross it, but we're talking about rare species at the same time. So keeping them out is actually probably more beneficial, because a little red turtle or blending turtle, whatever, salamander, it's not going to be seen from a crane as you're driving it around. So that's about all of that. Outside of your other comments.
Who do we have first here? And, and, but I want to neglect Kathleen after, go ahead, and then Kathleen.
I just want to follow up with that, the, the natural heritage line?
Yeah.
It is an estimate, it is an estimate using an online overlay to project it onto the site. Obviously, the actual location of, you know, habitat is obviously not going to be part of our developed portion of the site, you know, obviously you're not going to find any frogs or, you know, rare species up here. But it is an estimate, it is a line that tells you, you know, you're probably close to it, whether or not you're in it or not, it's an approximation, that's all.
To follow up on that, if you actually blow the whole point up and look at the rare species line, it goes around this whole property that's been built up, so that rare species line surrounds this entire property, just so you know that. So it could be an estimate, but it goes around all the way up to the dump and basically borders that entirely on both sides.
Yeah, because it's all filled up.
Yeah.
Do we know what the species is? Because I, I still can't find it.
I can't find it.
Kathleen was waiting patiently for her.
Is it blending turtles?
I'm not sure. This is from that area, this is from Bull's Quay.
Because I've dealt with landing turtles.
Kathleen must know.
Yeah, right, the ninja turtles. So at the top, if you go up to the north side, the more this pops up on screen, I wonder, what are these irregular fork-shaped things?
They're, they're just divisions for where we keep our different forms.
Oh, okay. That makes a lot, this is a very unique.
We, we put our forms into those, like?
Little bays.
Little bays, yeah, yeah.
And that's why they're, okay.
And those were existing previously.
Got it, okay, thank you.
And you guys store stuff in there right now?
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's just our forms, you know, we keep wooden forms.
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
In metal racks, wooden forms in metal racks, yeah.
They get picked up by cranes and put in trucks.
They get picked up by cranes, or by lulls, yeah.
Yeah, moles and fur.
Got it.
So what I would advise, given the hour, I'd like to defer the waivers to the next meeting, and also there's, there's some portion of the waiver requests that probably require a little bit of back and forth anyway, is it, am I right? Okay. Yeah. So what I'd like to do with the time remaining is just make sure, it makes sense that we have a sense of next steps and what the priorities are in our understanding.
I think we should just kind of discuss like, what, for the stormwater one especially.
Yes, exactly.
I'd like to talk about that as well.
Yeah, why don't we let, go ahead.
So I want to start with, I guess, a little bit of a background context in terms of what we typically look at for a redevelopment project. Under the mass DEPs, the 10 standards that is typically listed out for mass DEP talks about if you're in a redevelopment project and you're reducing the total impervious area on site, you're only required to provide stormwater to the maximum practicable. So in speaking about the term, you know, maximum practicable, I want to talk a little bit about the testing that was done on site. The soil testing that was done on site were somewhat limited due to the fact that we are in a situation where we have a lot of ledge, and we have a lot of unsuitable fill, both of which, you know, you cannot locate a stormwater system over, just due to the fact that, you know, following regulations, you can't do that. So in the few areas that we were able to actually go down and find suitable material, we have a couple of test pits here that we've done per test for, as well as a set or pair of test pit over here that we have done per test for. This gets us to meet the Title V requirement for locating a septic field. As we go further into the site, we have four test pits shown here, I'm sorry, five. The system itself is located over these two test pit specifically. The reason being is that that is the only spot that we were able to find parent material, things that, you know, we were allowed to infiltrate stormwater into. For the remainder of the test pit, this one over here, it's all unsuitable fill, you know, the stuff that's probably lining up the side slope and really the rest of the site, similar with this one and this one here. We have done some testings, or just trying to dig down. We have done some testings or just trying to dig down on the north side of the, the project site, trying to find a location somewhere we can fit chambers in just for the roof, anything that we can do to try to mitigate those, those stormwater. Unfortunately, we hit a lot of ledge and we're kind of stuck with the two locations, test pits that we have right now. So the site was designed around, you know, the limited space that we do have for placing recharge. So getting into, you know, this redevelopment status for the project, we have laid out in the stormwater narrative, the typical checklist for a redevelopment. We've gone through each one and basically determined or, you know, demonstrated that we have met per the state standards, the, the 10 standards as listed under redevelopment on the state side. As I understand, for the local side, you know, town of air, stormwater regs, we're required to provide 0.8 inch times the total site impervious cover to maximum practicable. Again, we're limited to the space that we do have here. Therefore, we needed to spell out exactly the, you know, the extent of what we can do in a realistic sense.
So just, before you go?
Yes.
You used the term maximum practicable enough times and what, what, that's sending up a flag for me. Are you setting us up for, you may say, well, the calculations show X amount of water, but we can only practically, maximally practically handle this amount and the rest of it's going to sheet off?
Not quite. It more, it has to do more with what we're, we're doing as part of the redevelopment, redevelopment itself and was existing. You know, as I mentioned, two-thirds of the site is disturbed and is currently sheet flow uncontrolled onto the adjacent side slope and onto the resource area. The waiver itself, well, let's back up a little bit. We're providing drainage to meet the regulations to the maximum practicable from the standpoint of we are providing 0.8 inch times the portion that is redevelopment to be captured and infiltrated prior to overflowing. We don't have sufficient capacity to address the existing portion of site that we're not touching due to the fact that A, we don't have suitable material to locate a system in, and B, we're, you know, we are doing everything we can to, I keep using the term maximum practicable, but, you know, from our point of view, it is, we're doing the most we can. But we still have to get those, I guess, the waiver itself acts as a vehicle of sort to kind of get these things in front of you guys, to have you, to be upfront and to have it discussed, not because we're required to have it as a waiver, but we're...
In fact, by definition, a waiver is your request, it's not what we require. What we require is conformance. You ask for a waiver, so, right, we don't require you to make a waiver.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So can I, just on a couple of things, you, you stated that you guys did test pits along all of the site. I only see four, five test pits. I only got soil logs for five test pits. I did not get soil logs for any of your other test pits that were conducted.
No problem.
Okay.
You asked for it, we'll...
Yep, okay. So we'll definitely need to see those just to, you know, to consider for the waiver.
No problem.
The, also, you say that you hit unsuitable fill. Matt, can, can I ask you a question? When you're, if you hit unsuitable fill, can't you remove that unsuitable, unsuitable fill and put in new, uh, new fill?
Uh, yeah, of course you can. Unsuitable fill, just, so, just to back up with the soil and ledge and all that, so I, I do agree, applicant, that there is, just from my understanding, like it's soil upstairs ledge.
Mm-hmm.
Eastern part of the site.
Basically where they're not doing any grading.
Yeah. So I do understand that, I guess in the future for, you know, if you say you're doing test pits and you hit something, it would just be good to have that on record just so we know, okay, you tried.
And at what depth you hit the ledge, right?
Correct, yeah. That would help us, I guess, be able to make a decision on the waiver request. In terms of unsuitable fill, I'd like to know, I guess, what that is.
Yeah. Because, you know, in, in my experience, I've seen, we've, we've hit unsuitable fill before, you excavate it out as deep as you can, you put new fill down, two feet to make sure you, you at least meet that two-foot standard and then go from there.
Yeah, in a moment, I want to give the gentleman, you have your chance to respond.
So unsuitable fill, well, let's kind of back up a little bit. Under the Mass Stormwater Handbook, Volume Two, Chapter Two, Infiltration Basin, it's specifically stated that you cannot locate the system over fill. So whether that is unsuitable fill or fill that you placed in, you cannot do that, it has to be infiltrated into parent material.
Right, so the adjective unsuitable is that the fact that it's fill at all?
Yes.
Is that like there's a special kind of fill versus an unacceptable kind of fill? There's fill.
Yes.
And, okay, thank you.
So, we have an interesting question. You have an interesting conundrum on this.
My only question is, you're talking about detention basin, but you're, you're proposing a subsurface area, so I don't know how we want the standards for a detention basin.
Infiltration period.
Infiltration, infiltration system in general. I brought up infiltration basin because it's the closest thing to these chambers in terms of TSS removal and what they show for, you know, general pretreatment, TSS, phosphorus removal, as well as the credit you get from the system. There's not a page itself, there's not a page under the current Mass Stormwater Handbook specifically for these chambers because they are proprietary system. So obviously, you know, each manufacturer would have to, you know, seek out DEP and have the conversation of, you know, what, what is it that you need from us to get the system itself to show up in the Mass Stormwater Handbook, which currently doesn't. So we chose the, we chose to highlight the infiltration basin because that is the closest thing to it and it is a standard practice to not have, to not, to not locate an infiltration system over fill.
Yeah, but you, but in infiltration basin, you can dig down an extra cup, two feet and use this, you know, material which would be suitable for infiltration.
Which is why I said that we were only able to find parent material for these two specific test pits here. The rest are all unsuitable fill that were logged in the, the information that was provided in the stormwater management report.
And so...
That's good.
On the, on the standard on, on redevelopment versus, so you're saying that redevelopment is just the impervious?
That is not what I'm saying.
Like in the, in the, so what you're going to be accounting for, for your stormwater, your redevelopment is only going to be the impervious area, which is your pavement and your building? And, you know, all the other impervious area sidewalks and that apron that you're going to have around there, correct?
I believe because the town of air consider compacted gravel, rap, you know, the stuff that's currently exists on site right now as impervious, we consider those impervious in our calculation. So obviously in the pre as well as the post. So in terms of getting the 0.8 inch of recharge required for the posts, you're not looking at just the building, the paved portion, you're also looking at, you know, a portion of the gravel driveway itself to be counted towards that volume provided inside the chambers.
Yeah, but your, your subsurface infiltration is not accounting for that extra stuff that you are redeveloping, right? Because this is, this is that whole argument I had before, this area and the regrading up here, correct? You're only accounting for this, this, and this.
And the concrete in the back.
Well, yeah, the, the building and the concrete.
I believe this portion as well is being directed to the curb here, being picked up. So you're looking at this chunk right here, as well as...
So this area...
This chunk right here.
Yeah. You, so you're accounting for this to go this way, but at this point where your, your aerials, aerials going this way, so all of this grading and this grading here is not being accounted for.
That is correct.
This would be a great situation, a machine, actual machine.
So, so that remains an open area of contention then, right? I mean, that needs to be resolved.
Based on...
Hundred percent correct. And as I said earlier on, we want to get together with Don Engineer, Danny, and everybody, and we have some ideas to address some of that. And, yeah, this is our initial meeting, we just got some comments.
Yep.
We want to move forward.
Okay. So what I propose is to bring this closer this evening and obviously continue it to the next one, but I, I think that...
I think we should talk just the landscape one.
The landscape one?
I think we did enough.
I think, yeah, let's leave it. And, and everyone jumped in on, so as I understand, some of the most important areas are just, as we just said, resolve the contentious issue of what is accommodated within this, in the stormwater system. And this is a general way, just the, the significance of that, especially that, the sensitivity of that southern slope and you're aware of how much we're concerned of it. And then obviously, there's going to be some back and forth discussions with DPW and Conservation and I just hope that over in the next month, we'll be able to get your responses to the inputs you got from the town planner, Conservation and the third, and DPW. Does that sound good?
Yep.
Can I have a motion for continuance, please?
I'd like to move to continue to the next air... I'm, I'm going to assume we can get this all in place by May 28th. There's a lot of work to do, I'm just going to ask before I make the move. I don't want to put you in this position, honestly. Move to continue the public hearing for 91 Grand Harvard Road, map 13 lot 8, to the next air planning board meeting on May 28th, 2024.
By the second. Any further discussion? Hearing non-ken?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
If there's a time, I have the date, but I didn't know...
6:15 is our, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I just sit here. I didn't say it, but...
And that's, and May 28th, is, is that correct?
We don't, we don't specify the exact same, the exact time.
I just, I wasn't sure if I heard it or was writing notes.
Yeah, we start at 6:15.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.
Hey, you do the short straw this time, huh?
Thank you.
You do the short straw today, huh?
Almost always.
He's a good trooper. So that's how I started, by the way. And I'm still here.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Just very quickly, one of the things we want to do in terms of the project status update, we're not going to get into who's going to do what committee assignments, but just so that Danny can start a list of where we are and then we can have another, porky pig, another meeting discussion of assignments, we just, as a baseline. So I'm doing the Stormwater Utility Advisory Group and what's the name of that pine meadow group, Heather?
Oh, it's, it's a land stewardship.
It's land stewardship, I mean, that's hardly a committee, it's small, it's...
The request is what other...
That's true, that's what this is, but as a...
As a member of the planning board, what are the, what are the groups committees or...
Are you appointed to?
Are you appointed to or set upon?
So with our planning board hat?
As a planning board person.
Not just our other...
No, as, as a planning board member.
Thank you for the correction, Heather. So for, as a planning board member, I'm currently on the Stormwater Utility Advisory Group. Okay. And then we'll just go around the table, just to get a record.
The other way, because I've got to think about this.
Ken's got a lot.
MRPC, I'm actually on the executive board of MRPC now and...
Affordable Housing.
They're Affordable Housing Trust.
Oh, what, what was the acronym you said?
Monarch Regional Planning Council.
Spell it.
MRPC.
MRPC.
Okay.
I'll be participating with Janet...
Excuse me. I'm sorry, Barry reminded me, Devon's...
Oh, you're off on the devils.
As an appointee from the planning board.
Thank you, Barry.
I'm so sorry, Nathan. I heard Barry talk, I heard my conscience talking in the corner.
Jiminy, Jiminy Creek.
Whatever, the affordable...
The working group?
Working group.
Yep. So affordable...
Is that different than affordable housing?
Yes.
Yes.
Subset.
It's wicked important.
Of this board.
It is.
Well, no, of the, of the, of the select board.
Select board.
Sorry, working group is select board?
Yes, so, yeah, well, it's a working group in which the select board gave Janet Provodakis the ability to...
Draw from different...
Draw from some different boards.
And the affordable housing is the Affordable Housing Trust?
Yes.
And there's also a affordable housing committee, we'll talk about that.
Well, I'm waiting for Alicia to get back on me, get back to me on how long your term is and if you're, you're up this year or next year. Because it's a two or three year.
And we're finding, hard time finding people, so it may roll.
Yeah. So we got Nathan, we got Jeff, got Nathan. Working group, right? Julie?
Community Preservation Committee.
Through the planning board?
And the...
CUPC?
Unless anyone... And the Devon's...
Oh, and the Devon's, yes, Devon's.
Devon's resolution.
Whatever Jeff's on, I'm on.
It's Devon's resolution, not, not framing.
Yeah, Devon's resolution.
They keep forgetting to invite me, so I haven't really been...
It's confusing, we named ourselves to not...
They appointed me and then didn't invite me again.
Okay.
And what are you on right now?
So these are appointments that, so here's a planning board member, we need a planning board person on this other...
Yes, yes, because in June, reappointments will be up and we'll have to do those again.
That would be the, I'm not sure if it applies, but the Affordable Housing Committee, I don't think is a planning board person, is it?
Are you a...
On the Affordable Housing Committee, well, from the Affordable Housing Committee, I represent the working group, not the planning board.
Okay, so you're, so those don't count.
I'm the Affordable Housing Committee.
Yeah, so those don't count.
Right, so those two don't count.
Yeah.
Right? So from the planning board to...
Anything about the senior center?
The senior center, I'm not sure that's either a planning board thing, that's a separate committee that came from the select board.
That is the senior center selection.
It's the senior center site selection.
Site selection committee.
Yeah, because you were not appointed from that, from the planning board.
Appointed from this board, right?
Okay, nope.
Right, okay, so that doesn't count.
So Ken, you're looking like a slacker here.
I'm telling you.
I don't care on the next one.
I've got time, he's got too much going on.
There's another committee that hasn't even, no, two other committees that haven't even met. One of them is an energy committee, as that hasn't met for years.
Okay.
And that, I also, I don't think it's a planning board. And the other one is, is an open space and recreation group too, that I've been to some of those meetings.
I, I think that one was based on the plan that was redone so that once the plan was submitted, they're going to approve it.
That was the master, that was the master plan.
I guess I'm not representing the planning board.
You're doing plenty.
You have plenty of other...
You represent us well here.
So, so the whole point of this is not to, it was just literally to get the facts down, this is stuff.
Yeah, so I could put a list together so that every air...
Is there a burning project status update that everyone needs to hear tonight?
No.
We don't have meeting minutes tonight?
There is one.
What?
42 Park Street, we should, do we need an update on that? I don't know.
I, I mean, as of now... It's under construction? It's under construction. They're, they're moving forward.